And we've got infrastructure engineers at nine twenty.
Let's call this meeting order.
Okay.
Please rise for the flags, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My, my.
Seriously.
What a silly meeting.
Good to see you too.
We need a telephone?
Yeah, we need to use somebody on speakerphone.
What's the phone number?
So, we're gonna be speaking with Aaron Finley at CEC. Four zero five seven five three four six two oh. I'm not sure we wanted to put that out there, huh?
Oh, he likes talking long things.
The questions are on the third page.
You know, you can ask a question, but you go, "No, I'm all right. I won't ask a question."
And...
Oh, they're all the same. Oh, and I can't even say the number.
I would say that I do find it interesting that we're given this list of interview questions that we have to ask. But the only question that we're... We can't ask is, how much does it cost?
Next loss stands. You got a score sheet in here?
Uh...
Looking for, uh...
That's not the cheapest.
I'm not sure that you can figure that out without knowing what the cost is.
Well, some of them are asking the questions since they get the paper open there.
I didn't hear anybody vote on that.
Wow.
Was that a...
I guess there wasn't much open there.
See this there?
Good morning, Aaron.
Good morning. How are you doing, Molly?
Good. Hey, I guess you understand the interview process and Mr. Goodman is gonna be asking you some questions and we're gonna be writing our answers down.
Okay, fair enough.
All righty. Thank you.
So, first of all, Aaron, I want you to know I did not volunteer for this job.
Nobody ever does, do they?
Okay. I'm sure... Have you got a copy of the questions, the interview questions, the standard questions that ODOT sends out, sends out on this?
Yes, yes, I do.
All right, so if I don't read it quite right, you'll still know what it means, right?
I should be all right.
Question number one is a concern's experience. What experience does your firm have inspecting different types of bridges in your area?
Our inspections are primarily done by two inspectors that have both been qualified team leaders for over ten years. And between those two guys, you know, we tend to think in terms of these two-year cycles, since that's how the contracting is done. Between those two guys, the last several cycles, they have looked at between three thousand and thirty-five hundred bridges between the two of them. So, you know, you look back across their careers, you know, they've literally looked at tens of thousands of bridges between the two of those guys. Obviously, that's a lot of experience. You know, they've operated exclusively here in the state of Oklahoma. The vast majority of what they have looked at has been these off-system bridges. We do just a little bit of on-system, on-state highways, but that's about, you know, five percent or so of our inspection loads. So, you know, they've looked at a lot of off-system bridges. Obviously, they've seen the common types, you know, the single-stand AC beams and steel beams and reinforced concrete boxes. But with that many bridges they've looked at, they've certainly seen the less common types. You know, they've seen the timber bridges, you know, the remaining concrete arches. There's a few of those out there. They've seen a number of bridges that are best described as homemade. It would kind of be how I would describe them. So, really, at this point, you know, I don't think there are any surprises for them probably left in the state of Oklahoma in terms of bridge types.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, move on to question number two. What ability and resources does your firm have to perform this type of work?
Well, like I said, we have two primary bridge inspectors that are, you know, that are in this day in, day out, you know, to do the lion's share of our fieldwork. We do actually have five qualified team leaders on staff, so, you know, three additional team leaders besides those two, myself and two others, that, you know, primarily function in other areas besides, you know, doing the actual bridge inspections. But we do have overflow capacity in that regard. And then we also have some guys on the office side too. Obviously, we gotta get inspections done in the field, but then we gotta get data entered and turned around, everything that ODOT needs, you know, we gotta get to them. And so, we're well-covered in that regard too. Now, one of our team leaders works very closely with Bridge Division, with Tony Sutton up there at Bridge Division, the guy who administers the program. Our guy has a lot of experience with the PONAS software that they use for that. He got in on the ground level and, you know, adopted that at the same time ODOT did. So, he's extremely helpful. He's kind of our front man on data entry and, like I say, the office side. Got a couple technicians that work with him as well. We have one here in the Oklahoma City office and one in the Duncan office that work closely with him. So, like I say, very well-covered on both the field and the office side.
Okay. On question number three, you asked what types of documentation your firm provides on completion. You guys have been doing our bridge inspections for this last cycle and we're pretty much become accustomed to that, but can you explain what you're providing, if there'll be any changes to that if you're selected again?
Sure. Yeah, kind of our base package has got the notebook and the maps. Within that notebook, there'll be the inspection reports. And typically, what we do for everybody is provide two copies. We provide the updated, clean copy. The temp PONAS software spits out all the current information. When the inspector's in the field, he will have taken the previous inspection report and marked it up. And we'll typically include that as well, just because a lot of folks think it's easier to see what changed. And then with those two reports, will be a minimum of two pictures for each bridge. And then if there are any additional defects or, you know, damage, anything we want to draw special attention to, then there's, you know, additional pictures above beyond those two. So, the reports and pictures are the bulk of what's in the notebook. And then we, in the front of that, that stack of reports, there'll be a couple of summary sheets. Those are kind of quick reference features where you can look at some of the key information, like load ratings and sufficiency ratings, kind of a quick reference deal for that. We also will have some maintenance summaries. So, instead of flipping through the whole notebook to figure out what might need some work, we'll have that condensed into some bullet points that are a little easier to manage. And of course, that's what we talk about when we deliver the reports. Also, the maps, we'll do a, we do a, what we call half-size, eleven-by-seventeen map. It's folded up in the front of the notebook. And then we do the larger, the larger mounted, twenty-four-by-thirty-six foamboard mounted map, inventory map with the, you know, locations and current load ratings of all the bridges. So, that's kind of the base package. We've also recently, and actually, I think this was, I think Molly was the first one to remind me that this is a good idea, just basically doing a single PDF of the whole notebook, you know, electronic version of the whole notebook, where the front page of that is the map. And then when you click on one of the bridge locations, it jumps you right down to the corresponding report. So, we have started including that as part of our base package of deliverables as well. And then, let's see, yeah, that's basically the base package. Like I say, we have a few other counties that, you know, prefer some additional materials or something different. You know, some of our, some of our counties are getting more GIS and they want shape files. That's fine. We're glad to include those. So, certainly, like I said, I refer to all that as the base package because we're glad to modify it, you know, add to it whatever you might prefer.
All right, thanks, sir. Question number four. What QA does your firm have to provide consistent, accurate results?
We got a couple of aspects of that. There's kind of a formal exercise to it, and then there's what I think of as more the daily, the daily process. That formal exercise is something we do where, once every inspection cycle, I will get with our active team leaders, so the guys that are, you know, signing the inspection reports. And we'll handpick five bridges each for those guys. And we don't pick just, you know, five brand-new concrete boxes or something, but we'll pick challenging structures or typically old structures that have a lot going on, got some damage and defects that need to be documented. And we'll go out and have a field review of those. We'll take their previous inspection in hand and we'll really, really spend time going over it with a fine tooth comb. Make sure that, you know, we're consistent with each other as a team. Make sure that everything they're coding is consistent with all the guidelines that ODOT puts forth in their manual. And so, that's kind of a rigorous, in-depth review exercise we do for the team leaders. And then write up a report on that after we're done there. So, that's the formal exercise. The kind of more daily aspect of it, I think, starts first and foremost with the fact that, again, your assessments are done by experienced, you know, very experienced team leaders. Once they get in from the field, they bring their files back, then we do a file swap, and we have the other experienced team leader look them over, so we get a peer review process in there, help make sure that the eyes are dotted and the t's are crossed. And then between those two guys, if they have anything they're not agreeing on or not sure how they want to code something, or they have something looking a little bit off, like, hey, this has got some damage or something needs a load rating, then they will flag it for my particular attention. So, everything that comes back to you should have been looked at twice, if not three times.
Okay. So, you have a peer review of all of your work products that come in?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Question number five. What's the accessibility of your firm? How can we get in touch with you?
Well, we certainly try hard to be very accessible. We think whether we're talking about bridge inspection or design or any kind of county work, we think accessibility is very important. It is probably particularly important on the bridge inspection side because things can and do literally change overnight. Sometimes you get a big rain and, you know, all of a sudden, you've got some bridges that got problems that need to be looked at. And we're used to that. We're sensitive to that with the team leaders that we have. And certainly, some of those being local right here in the Oklahoma City area, we're just up the road from you. If things happen and you need to get somebody in the field, certainly, we can get somebody there, you know, quickly. Typically, it's the next day, you know, especially if it's an emergency basis, you know, day in or next day is not uncommon at all. If you have things that are a little bit less pressing, certainly, you know, primary point of contact, you're welcome to call my direct desk number, my cell phone number, anytime. And usually, you can get ahold of me. If you can't, you know, I'll get back with you in a matter of minutes or hours, but I'm certainly not gonna let something go by for days or weeks without getting back to you.
Okay, appreciate that. What's your workload like right now?
You know, this is one of my least favorite questions on here because moving forward, you know, we're interviewing with everybody at the same time, so sometimes we don't really know how all the chips will fall. But if we do look at literally what's going on right now and kind of assume that holds roughly steady, we're in pretty good shape. We're in a good spot right now. The guys have been comfortably busy, but they've got some bandwidth to add to what they've been doing. For a number of cycles, we did Oklahoma City's inventory, which is a very large inventory, six hundred-plus bridges. And they just historically kind of move that around to different consultants. And, you know, our turn was over, so to speak, last time, and so it got moved to somebody else. So, we have that gap in our, you know, in our workload. We picked up a couple of small entities, but we certainly did not completely fill that hole last time. So, like I say, if we look at what we got now and then assume it's roughly the same moving forward, we certainly have the bandwidth to continue to do yours, even if we would add, you know, some additional entities in there.
Okay, great. Question seven. How will your firm react to critical findings?
You know, certainly, you guys are aware that with the normal reporting process, by the time we, you know, wrap up in the field and then come back here and do that peer review we talked about, you know, generate reports, you know, update the map, all that good stuff, sometimes there's quite a bit of delay before we sit down and really go over everything with you. In the event that we find something that's critical, that's all out the window. We're gonna bypass that whole process. If the inspector knows for a fact that it's dangerous, he's gonna stop right there on the site. He's gonna call the county and he's gonna call me. And if at all possible, he's going to stay there until somebody from the county can meet him there and talk about, you know, what needs to be done to address the situation in the short term. There are occasions when he sees something that concerns him. He doesn't know that it's immediately dangerous, and he may come back to the office and discuss with me, and we may decide, okay, that does fall in the critical category. You know, in that case, it may be twenty-four hours before you get a notification. But that's your worst-case scenario. It was a twenty-four-hour notification on critical findings. We're not going to have critical conditions that they go out and tend to do in the field for, you know, for weeks or months while we're doing, you know, data processing and all that stuff.
Okay, twenty-four hours or less, then. That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, great, sir. Okay, question number eight. This is where you get to pat yourself on the back, but don't take too long.
Right, right.
Why should we pick your consulting firm above the others?
Well, without a doubt, ODOT has put together a list of qualified consultants, and obviously, they are all qualified. I think we bring you a unique balance of bridge inspection experience and county experience. There are some folks on there that are very specialized in bridge inspection, but I think a lot of them don't probably work with counties very often. And the flip side of that is there are some on there that are very used to working with counties, but probably don't have the depth of bridge inspection experience that we have. And so, I think that positions us uniquely to give you a very good inspection product, but also give you kind of a support base under that, that is familiar with counties and how they work and what your needs and resources and limitations are. So, I think that combines to give you a very practical, useful inspection service.
Okay, sir, that's all the questions we have. Any comments from the board before we let Mr. Finley go?
It's good for me. This'll work.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you giving us a call.
Just so it's clear with the board, I had scheduled these at ten-minute intervals, and they didn't have run long. I did contact the other two that were waiting, let them know we were running longer and to keep them waiting, so...
Yeah, I think probably twelve to fifteen minutes is gonna be closer to, I mean, just to get through all these.
Yeah, and so, like I said, they've both been notified and are waiting. So, Guy Engineering was up next.
So, is somebody else gonna ask the question? Is the guy in chair?
No, we're gonna keep it the same, is what the paper says.
I don't think that's what the paper says. On our score, one through ten?
One through ten.
Ten being the highest?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we'll add them all up when we're finished.
Can you hear all right, Andrew?
Yeah, I can hear fine.
Everybody here?
I do.
All right, you ready?
Yeah, why not? Who we talking to now?
Guy Engineering.
Is that Ryan?
Aaron Peck.
Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, got you.
Hi, is this Aaron?
Yes.
Hi, Aaron. This is Marvin Goodman, Logan County Board of Commissioners.
Morning.
Hey, good morning. I guess you know why we called. And I was wondering, do you happen to have a list of the interview questions that ODOT sent out for these types of things?
Oh, yeah. I've got everything.
Okay, so, I'm not gonna explain a whole lot about the questions, and we'll just get started, if you don't mind.
That sounds great.
Okay. Question number one. What experience does your firm have inspecting different types of bridges in your area?
With Guy Engineering, we've been performing bridge inspections in Oklahoma since about nineteen ninety-two. We're dedicated to making county bridges safe for fellow Oklahomans as well as visitors to our state. Regardless of the types of bridges that we've inspected, we've seen just about every type of bridge there is in Oklahoma, whether it's PC beam, I-beam, concrete, coverts, steel coverts, pre-cast bridges, timber bridges, just about any type of bridge that's been built in Oklahoma, we've seen or inspected it. We also have designed over two hundred county bridges, so we're very familiar with the new standards that are out there, the new types of pre-cast structures that are out there, and so we're very familiar with all those for our inspections as well.
Okay. Question number two. What ability and resources does your firm have to perform this type of work?
We're a very highly skilled and dedicated team of professional layers, excuse me, professional engineers and technicians, making our goal to provide accurate and on-time inspections to you. I have five team leaders who are all professional engineers. They're all full-time employees of Guy Engineering, as well as three technicians who help us in the field as well as in the office. All of our team leaders have very diverse backgrounds in bridge design, hydrology, hydraulics, grid rehabilitation, bridge repair. So, we're very familiar with all the items that need to, we need to address in the field, whether it be a scour related issue, something with a superstructure or substructure, so we can better equip you to know as the bridge owner what you need to do to replace or repair your bridges to make sure that you can maintain your inventory properly.
Okay, thank you. Question three. What documents will your firm provide upon completion of the inspections?
We always want to try to provide you detailed documentation. They not only provide the information about one specific bridge, but also, again, to help you as owners better understand your inventory, to better program them on the CRB plan, or however that may go. After we complete an inspection, we'll bring to you two, three ring binders with all of the inspection reports that we've done, as well as all the photos that we've taken. We like to take a lot of photos for bridges, because we find it's very important to have photographic documentation of the bridges over a long period of time. When a disaster happens and a flood happens or something else, if FEMA comes in, sometimes they'll look at the bridge inspection reports as ways to look at the history of the bridge, what was there before, so they can know how to allocate funds going forward. We'll also bring you a pair letter with instructions for fixing any deficiencies, circle maps, three full-size and three half-size copies of each district, as well as a county, if you'd like that. We can provide three copies of what we call a bridge summary chart, which details out all your bridges, and just as an overview of the information of the road that's over it, the creek that it's on, that it goes over, and the various other items like that. We also provide a bridge sufficiency table. The sufficiency rating being the information that allows you to kind of quickly see the health of a bridge, so you can better rate, you know, a lower sufficiency rated bridge, you might want to look at replacing it or repairing it. So, this kind of gives you a quick overview on which bridges you might want to put into the CRB plan or something like that. We'll also provide all this information to you on CD and PDF format. All the reports will be by circle number. All the information can be put into a GIS database. We can send you shape files to put in a GIS database, if you'd like, or we can give you a KMC or KML file, which can be put on Google Earth and easily opened on computers or mobile devices.
Okay, great, thank you. Question number four. What quality assurance does your firm have to provide consistent and accurate results?
We're very stringent quality assurance and quality control process in place. We have multiple checklists that we use in the office as well as in the field, making sure that we meet all of federal highway requirements, as well as ODOT's requirements. Once we return from the field, all the information is put into PONAS, which is the bridge database that's used by ODOT. All that information is then reviewed by the team leader once it's been input. Revisions are made, error checks are run through the system again, then it's reviewed again by the team leader, and then the package is put together and I, myself, as the program manager, review the overall, excuse me, review the overall package. So, we have a multi-stage process on how to review it to make sure that we meet all the FHWA as well as ODOT criteria. We're constantly training our personnel, making sure that we're using the same words and call-outs in the inspection, so that no matter who's inspecting it, bridges from Guy Engineering, you know, you're gonna get the same type of inspection, the same quality inspection. So, that's how we deal with our quality assurance and quality control.
Okay, thank you. Question number five. How accessible is your firm to get in touch with?
We're trying to be extremely accessible with all our inspectors, either available at our office or by cell phone while in the field. We will call you before we come out to inspect the bridges, letting you know in each district that we're gonna be in the area inspecting the bridges, so it's not a surprise that we're out there, anything like that. Our goal is always to try to respond to you within twenty-four hours with any questions or comments you may have. We may not necessarily have to answer right away, but we'll respond to you and let you know that we're looking into the answer and trying to find the information for you.
Okay, thank you. Number six. What's your firm's current workload?
We currently perform about a thousand inspections per year, but again, with our crack staffing levels of five team leaders, we can expand that greatly because really, we only busy about two months to two and a half months out of the year. So, we have a lot of capacity to add inspections to our portfolio. We're always trying to expand our bridge inspection department and training up new personnel as needed to increase our capacity. So, even though it's not looking a lot that we inspect, we have a lot of room to grow in that area.
Okay. Number seven. How will your firm react to critical findings?
As I mentioned before, we'll call the commissioner or point of contact or whoever before we come out, letting you know we're gonna be in the area. But once we are there, if we find a critical finding at the bridge, we will call that same person and whoever we need to get ahold of and have them meet us at the bridge and discuss the critical findings, what the problems are, what needs to be taken care of in the area, and talk to you about the repairs and you can go right then and there, so you're very aware of what's going on right then and there. And we will then issue a letter within three days with that same information, letting you know that those things are taken care of.
Okay, great. Question number eight. Why should we pick your firm, your consulting firm, above the others?
We own a Logan County consultant firm that provides thorough, efficient, and quality bridge inspections that'll keep your community safe. We also need a consultant who's professional, trained, and can communicate with you regularly, so there's never any surprises when an inspection cycle ends. We here at Guy Engineering here, we are that consultant for you. We give our mission statement every day, which is engineering safe from lasting infrastructure solutions for our communities. And as an employee owned Oklahoma company with all of our inspectors in Oklahoma, we know that improving infrastructure is paramount to everyone's safety. And then working together with the county, we can improve the safety for ourselves, our families, and our neighbors.
Okay, thank you very much. That pretty much sums up all the questions we're able to ask. Is there anything from the board? Good, okay. Sir, we appreciate your time this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
I already got the yeses.
So, I made it a little time. I gotta talk fast.
Yes, he does.
Busy guy.
Who's next?
Infrastructure Solutions. Michael Dukes is the name.
Y'all ready?
Sure.
Good morning, Greg here.
Good morning. Is this Mr. Dukes?
Uh, this is Mr. Haas Stedler, actually. Greg Haas Stedler.
Okay.
Greg, this is... Are you still there?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is Marvin Goodman, Commissioner with Logan County Board of Commissioners. We're calling this morning with, to do the interview for Bridge Inspection Services.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Michael had talked to me about it. He unfortunately had another commitment today, but he had requested that I cover the interview for him.
Okay, what was your name again?
It's Greg Haas Stedler. It's Greg Hosteller.
Okay, Greg.
Uh, yeah, Michael runs our, Michael runs our, uh, structural assessment division here. Um, and I'm actually responsible, um, for this office in this region that we work in.
Sure, no, no worries there, Greg. Um, so, do, do you have a question, a list of the interview questions that ODOT sends out for all of bridge inspection interviews?
Yes, yeah, we have received that, yes, sir.
Okay, so, we'll go ahead and start, uh, if you don't mind, and we're gonna, we'll start with question number one.
Okay.
What experience does your firm have inspecting different types of bridges in your area?
Okay, um, so we've been working for Oklahoma DOT, doing bridge inspection work, uh, since about nineteen ninety-nine. We started out here doing underwater inspections, uh, we do a lot of that, that's, uh, uh, a big part of, of what we do, we've got dive teams, in fact, we have a full dive team here in Oklahoma. And since then, we've, I've been providing additional inspection services, including routine, uh, both on and off-system bridge inspections throughout the state, um, as well as complex and fracture critical inspections, uh, also throughout the state. Um, and so, as part of our off-system inspection contract, uh, we've been inspecting a lot of, a lot of bridges, both off-system fracture critical and routine, um, in a lot of different parts of the state. We've been exposed to essentially every type of bridge we have here in Oklahoma. And we also bring a lot of national expertise, uh, we bring inspection experience from just about every state, um, in the United States. Uh, so we've, we've been exposed to, to quite a bit, you know, bridge inspections are our core business, it's more than fifty percent of what we do as a company.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, question number two, what ability and resources does your firm have to perform this type of work?
Okay, so here, um, y'all focus on our local resources, since those are the ones that would be engaged in this work. Uh, so locally, we have, uh, in, in our Edmond office, four, four bridge inspection team leaders. Uh, some of those are, are professional engineers like myself and Michael Dukes. And then we have, uh, some other inspectors that are non-engineers, um, that have been just trained, they have the more than five years of experience, uh, and are therefore, therefore qualified as bridge inspection team leaders, they've been through all the training, et cetera. Uh, in addition to that, we've got, uh, four or five assistant bridge inspectors here in our Edmond office. Um, and so we've got quite a bit of capacity to do, to do a lot of inspection work out of this office. And from time to time, for more complex projects, we'll bring in resources from other offices. And we wouldn't anticipate that on this particular project. And, uh, we also have, uh, an entire warehouse full of bridge inspection equipment, uh, everything from routine inspection equipment to rope access, uh, climbing equipment, to a full dive inspection, uh, equipment package here in Edmond.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question three, what documents will your firm provide upon completion of the inspections?
Sure. So of course, uh, there, there's some required documentation, uh, which you're very familiar with by now. Um, the actual PONAS bridge inspection report, uh, that's produced, uh, uh, through their, through their PONAS program, uh, which includes the, all this structure inventory and appraisal data, all the inventory items that, that have to be submitted with that. Then of course, uh, a lot of photographs documenting any conditions that are either, uh, fair to poor condition, or items requiring corrective action, uh, will be provided with those reports. Uh, one of the things that we really like to do is, as an enhancement, is we provide a, uh, kind of a spreadsheet that will be color-coded, that'll highlight things such as significant changes in the ratings. In other words, if a rating drops from a five down to a four, putting it in poor condition, I will flag that for you, so you don't have to go digging for it in the actual inspection reports. We'll also flag any, any bridges that have become, or, or are scour critical. Uh, you know, basically things that, that need to be brought to your attention, uh, that we can provide you in a, in a quick snapshot to you, versus, again, having to go digging through the reports to find that information. And then we'll also have a list of all the repair recommendations prioritizing those, and, uh, making it abundantly clear which ones are, are high priority versus ones that can wait. Uh, we know that there are limited, limited funding, um, resources available oftentimes for these bridges, so we'll help you do your best to manage those dollars, uh, in the best way possible.
Okay. Uh, question number four, what, what quality assurance does your firm have to provide consistent and accurate results?
So our, our, our first line of defense in quality control, uh, quality assurance is our people. Uh, so we, we hire, uh, the best in the industry, and then we train them and provide them tools and equipment to be successful. Uh, so that's first and foremost, and then beyond that, you know, even before going in the field, we spend a lot of time reviewing available documentation and putting together, uh, basically scope, project scope-specific checklist that we use, uh, before we go in the field to make sure we have all the appropriate equipment, and then in the field to make sure we've collected all of the necessary data. Uh, along with that is making sure we've collected any as-built information that we need to do load ratings. Uh, then once we've completed the fieldwork, our quality control process in the office is also very, uh, has been tried and tested over the last twenty-five years. Uh, we've got a, a real strict report review process, and where it goes from the team leader to a more senior supervisor, all type team leader, and then finally to the PE for a final review. Uh, so our, our QC processes have been, again, they've been tested over the years, and, and we're very confident in, in the results that it produces.
Okay. Question number five, how accessible is your firm to get in touch with?
Sure, since we do so much emergency response, um, you know, we're, we're accessible more or less twenty-four, seven. Uh, we provide to all of our clients, uh, of course, our, our, not only our email, but our personal direct numbers, and also our cell numbers, uh, recognizing that oftentimes, uh, bridge, bridge incidents don't happen at the most convenient of times. And we wanna be there and help you to respond to any, any bridges, um, you know, any type of flood, flood damage, et cetera. So we, we pride ourselves on being, being available and having a quick response. Uh, we just recently helped out in Texas with a lot of the work down there to help them get their bridges evaluated and reopened, and, uh, so we're, I'd, I'd say that we're highly accessible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number six, what's your firm's current workload?
Sure, um, well, we're, we're busy, uh, like most of the firms now, there's, there's actually, uh, quite a bit of work out there. We do also design work, and, so we're, we're busy, um, but we've got capacity, and especially going into next year, to take on additional inspection work. You know, we're, because we're heavy in inspection, we have a lot of, uh, there's a lot of times where our guys, uh, work overtime, and, and, you know, there's heavy, heavy periods, usually from the end of the summer through fall, where our guys are, are really working hard. But we've never not been able to deliver to a client because of workload. And we've got enough resources nationwide that, that we can share, uh, should we get in a pinch. Uh, so again, we, we're busy, but we, we've got capacity, and, and we can certainly manage this workload.
Okay. Number seven, how will you, how will your firm react to critical findings?
Well, first and foremost, we'll react in accordance with what the law requires, um, and that being both the federal and, and then world, and then our Oklahoma DOT. Of course, there are requirements for, uh, for critical findings, so they call them CX conditions, as you know. And, uh, they require immediate notification, uh, to the bridge owner, as well as to the state. And, so we would provide that, uh, on-site, we would typically try to send photographs using a, a cellphone, and then follow that up the same evening, uh, with a written response, letting you know exactly what the condition is, and, and how it needs to be addressed. And then we follow that through with the sixteen, ninety-day, uh, notifications. I think you're, you're familiar with how that goes, but, uh, we, we're used to doing those. We do a lot of that in our off-system inspection contract, uh, where we have to follow up and just make sure that the appropriate action's taken, whether it's just putting a posting sign in place, or making some type of a, a structural repair. But we really try to work with you and, and help you to work, work through that. And, uh, again, knowing that, uh, sometimes these things are challenged, challenging, and especially with the limited budgets that you have. Uh, so, our, our goal is to, to work with you and, and make that as painless as we can, and also meet the federal and state requirements for fraction for, uh, critical findings.
Okay, thanks. Um, last item, item eight, why should we, why should we pick your consulting firm above the others?
Sure, well, I would say there's, you know, there's any number of firms that stand on your list, uh, that can do this work, and, um, you know, I think what, if I had to pick one or two things that really sets us apart, I would, I would argue that there's a lot of companies, uh, and even the ones that are, that are on your list, that, that do bridge inspections, and there are a lot of them that sort of dabble in it. Uh, but we've, we've built our company around safety inspection of bridges. Uh, it's still about more than fifty percent of our workload, both locally and nationally. In fact, locally, it's probably more like seventy percent. So because, because it's our core business, um, you know, we, we live by it. We have to, we have to deliver exceptional results to our clients. And, um, you know, we, we believe that nationwide, we're one of the leading bridge inspection firms, um, not only for routine inspection, but for, for complex and underwater inspection. So there's some things, for just, just as an example, some things that we'll do that some other consultants may not be as willing to do, would be to get up and put hands on parts of the bridge that are difficult to get to. Our guys are used to doing that, they can use ladders, they can use rope access techniques. We have SFR certified, uh, climbers that, that can easily get up and, and get, get their hands on members. And, and identifies things that might be critical, where it's just difficult to see those things from the ground. And by the same perspective, our guys are very willing to get in the water, um, and, and get a look at things. Uh, you know, we've got equipment to do that, where other, where other companies may not be as willing to do that. Uh, so those, those are some things that I really feel like set us apart, you know, we, we are actually trainers. We, we provide the bridge inspection refresher course, which is a federal class that a lot of agencies use to keep their inspectors up to date on the latest technologies and innovations. And so, I'm a trainer, Michael Dukes is also a certified trainer for national highways to, and so we're, we're, we're kept apprised of the latest things that are happening in the industry, and we can bring those to bear for you on this contract.
Okay, Greg, we appreciate your time this morning, that concludes our, our interview. Any, uh, comments from the board? Okay, no comments. Greg, we appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, and you have a great day.
You too.
Okay.
My back was done.
Was that yours?
Yeah.
Uh, I thought that was the, from the background.
Yes, sir.
Also, so we need to tally up your sheets, but, so I don't forget, the very, I think it's the very back of, of your little packet here, there's a non-disclosure statement that needs to be signed, as well as the information on the evaluation sheet.
Sign that word, says evaluate her?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So that gives us a whole ten engineering firms to pick from this year, huh? Okay. Calculating.
Is everybody ready?
I came up with CEC sixty-five.
Okay, I've gotta put this, so if you don't mind, let me, cause I'm gonna have to write these out, so. Marvin, District One, what'd you have for CEC?
Seventy-five.
Mike?
Uh, I had sixty-nine.
Bonnie?
Sixty-five.
Guy Engineering, District One?
Sixty.
Mike?
Uh, sixty-six.
Bonnie?
Forty-nine.
Infrastructure Solutions, Marvin?
Fifty-seven.
Mike?
Sixty-seven.
Bonnie?
Forty-two.
All right, give me this a second.
Can we do comments, announcements while you're calculating over there?
Sure.
My comment, I guess, would be, it'd be pretty handy if you was going to a job and giving you every question that they can ask you, and they can't ask you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If, uh, if you can't ask how much it costs, that ODOT give a limit to what their range is to charge you?
I don't think they do.
I mean, if one says one point four million, one's three hundred thousand, you don't know which one's one point one million.
But. Not my rule.
Oh, I know, that's why I asked you, I did.
It's a, it's another state agency where they maintain a list of people you can pick from, but you can't ask them how much it costs.
But ODOT doesn't go to them and say, this is your range, and you can charge?
Uh, we don't know.
They're just either on the list, or they're not on the list. And I don't know how they, I guess they just go through and pick what they think's four or five people be on the list. Did they hand us the list to pick?
You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. So CEC received a total score of one ninety, uh, you know what, never mind, go back to comments. I added these the wrong way. I just realized what I did, sorry about that.
Y'all getting comments, announcements?
No. I've just got, I've got one that has to do with ODOT, and that is, um, I was at, just got back, I think it was last week, at, uh, an IPTC meeting, which is the Technical Committee Meeting from ACOF, the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. And we were going over new scoring criteria and that sort of stuff for, uh, the federal grant system. During that, that meeting, ODOT Region Three and Region Four got up and briefed the federal, their federal grant, uh, A-GIR plan. And I'd, I'd noticed that they completely left out Highway Seventy-four, uh, North Waterloo Road, that's starting to crack. It's, it's weathering very badly, and, you know, in my uneducated estimation, if it goes another winter or two, we're gonna lose that road, if something's not done with it.
So I asked the question, you know, what's, what's going on with that? And they said, well, that's actually on a different maintenance list and we don't have that information available, but you can certainly go and look for it on our website, which I thought was interesting. So what they decided to do was, they said they would make the Region Four folks available to come to one of our board meetings and give us an update on all of the roads, ODOT maintained roads in the county, and give us a briefing on that, on what their intentions are, long-term and midterm. So I sent a copy of that, they responded back to me as well. I think they responded to everybody on our board. But my recommendation is we try and ask them to come to our next meeting on the 15th of December. Or not our next meeting, but our meeting on the 15th of December. Those seem to be the time where we can devote a little more time to those sorts of things. There are meetings at the first and the last of them might seem to have to do with a lot of signatures, so.
Sounds good.
Anyway, that's all I have.
And just so that we can be clear, when I wrote my, my little graph out, my first addition, I went straight down this way, which would have given me the total points that each district across instead of this way. So we now have it. Total, CEC, 209, Guy, 175, Infrastructure Solution, or Engineers, 159.
All righty, number four, consideration of possible action on approval resolution of selecting engineering firms to conduct county bridge inspections.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we submit, select and submit CEC as our bridge inspection team for next two years.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Any citizen or designer to be heard?
Here's the resolution that needs signing.
Hearing none, any more comments, announcements, questions by the board? Hearing none. Seven, consideration of possible action on adjournment after this is signed.
Gentlemen, I need your score sheet and your non-disclosure forms.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion carries, order adjourned.